Call this meeting ordered, please silence your electronic devices and stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Biakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to wish everyone in the city of Batavia a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. And of course, the health is the most important thing. For the invocation, Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this new year. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect all the citizens of Batavia, our workforce, the businesses, the young people, and the senior members of the community. Let us not forget why the citizens elected us to represent them in all matters that come before this body. Please continue to remind us that all we do here today and all year, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and the City Charter of the City of Batavia, New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Councilman?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll do the election of City Council President, accept nominations from the floor. Ms. Briggs?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Eugene Jankowski. He's very organized, detail-oriented. Okay, our meetings run very smoothly. He works well with management and works well with everyone on council, and I believe we should support him to continue as our council president. Thank you.
Second vote, Ms. McGinnis. Any other nominations? Call the roll.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution one, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Beely?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution appointing pro-tem.
Second vote, Ms. Briggs? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution two, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to adopt the rules governing council business meetings, conference meetings, and council member roles.
Second vote, Mr. Richmond. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution two, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to adopt the rules governing council business meetings, conference meetings, and council member roles.
Second vote, Mr. Richmond. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Beely. Second vote, Mr. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Now call for order of the special conference meeting. Are there any public comments?
No.
No communications I see on my list?
Not tonight.
The next city council meeting will be held Monday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, seven p.m., at the City Hall Council Boardroom, Second Court, City Center. Today we have a public hearing for the zoning code amendment professional offices. Motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Beely. Second vote, Mr. Richmond. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Or we got to call the roll. Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak in reference to the zoning change for the professional offices? If you didn't sign up to speak, you can still speak if you just let me know if you want to. Okay. Motion to end the public hearing, Mr. Beely. Second vote, Mr. Schmidt. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Biakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Is there seeking to allow professional offices?
Thank you, Council President. The council has before them a resolution to declare lead agency status and issue a negative declaration in relation to the zoning amendments to the Batavia Municipal Code and special use permit for professional offices.
Are there any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? Okay, if it's moved. Foreclosure property option?
We have to go back to the zoning code amendment. So there's the seeker and then the amendment piece.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought I did. Okay, I got confused. So we're doing the seeker next.
We did the seeker first.
So now we're in the zoning code professional offices?
Yep. So I'll just explain a little bit about what the changes to the zoning code are and jump in at any time. The changes would allow, under a special use permit, professional offices in the R1A, R2, and R3 zoning districts. Furthermore, the Planning and Development Committee has submitted recommendations to update the special use permit definitions for professional offices. To require at minimum one parking space per employee, limit professional offices to no more than four in one building, again, in residential districts, require setbacks of thirty-five feet for rear and front yards, and a minimum of twelve feet for one side yard and twenty-five feet for both side yards. Further, the special use permit for professional offices in residential zones with an existing building permit will require the applicant to provide a survey, a site plan, review of existing and planned vegetation, stormwater discharge plan, refuse storage plan, exterior lighting, existing property and building dimensions, as well as outdoor storage. Brett, do you have anything to add?
No, I, well, I think the only thing that I would add is originally we had just done this in the R1A district, but for consistency's sake, we're also doing it in the R2 and as well as the R3 residential districts, just to have consistency across the board in case something like this comes up. In an R2 district, we've already got that language in the zoning code, and opposed to going back and having to go through this whole process again, we figured it'd just be easier to amend the zoning code, which would be one ninety-nine, one ninety-eleven, and twelve, to cover all three of those districts through the use of a special use permit, along with one ninety-three-seven, which is a special use permit as well. So that's all I have to add to that.
Any questions on that? So what's the, give us the timeline where we're at now, just so I understand where we're at on this stuff.
So after this meeting, the final vote would occur. If you move it forward to the next meeting, which would be January twenty-second, and then anyone that was interested in a conversion project would go through the special use permit process.
Any other questions on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yes.
If it gets moved, now we're in the foreclosure property.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city of Batavia listed five residential properties in an online foreclosure auction hosted by Bontrager. Bids were received for all five properties and are listed in the resolution in your packet. After a review of the bidders, city management has found that the bidders are responsible with no outstanding taxes or code violations in the city.
Any questions? Concerns?
How much time do they have to pay for the properties for their law?
Forty-five.
The closing would take place at the point of the council approval. At the point of closing, they would be required to pay the balance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yes.
If it gets moved, first do software.
Thank you, Council President. As you are aware, the city continues to review and assess operational software to create efficiencies in the city and better serve residents. To this end, the Batavia Fire Department would like to purchase additional models of the first do firefighter design software to allow multiple upgrades to the way the fire department operates, and Eric will tell you a little bit more about the capabilities and how it will replace pen and paper timesheets.
Timesheets is one of the things that the software will do, as far as scheduling goes, callouts for shifts, messaging, all sorts of different things. But it also has the ability to help us with incident reporting, particularly in filing the state and federal compliance regulations. So the firefighters actually have access to this software right on the iPads that they take out with them on calls, and they can start logging information instead of having to come back and download that onto another computer and fill out all the paperwork and all the forms and things like that and then send it off. They do it once, it's done, it's gone, off it goes. This software is really kind of neat because it's actually developed by firefighters or former firefighters who found a need that they really just couldn't find a standalone product that works for fire departments, and so they created it on their own. Again, we're currently using it for other things right now. We're looking to purchase additional parts of a package for a five-year, for five years for fifty thousand five hundred dollars.
And Eric, Eric, is that going to include locations such as high-grant locations within the city?
That's what they are, use it for currently.
Oh, they're using it for?
Yep, so it'll have that. It also allows them to, one of the other things that they're really excited about is asset and inventory piece. So every single piece that they have in the fire hall, every single truck, they'll be able to monitor and keep up to date and ensure where everything is. So they're really happy with what they have so far. We made the transition, what, about, about a year ago, maybe a little more?
Yeah.
To first do, and this is just adding on to what we currently have.
And I think first do, it was in a water bill you would have received and also some emails, because you can register your home with the number of people in your home, pets, whether you have someone who is oxygen-dependent or other things. So while they're out driving to a call, they can bring up your home, and if you've put in your personal information, they can tell exactly how many individuals or pets they'll be looking for when they arrive at the scene.
And we're looking to move this forward to the next conference meeting on the twenty-second. Any other questions?
Yeah, what's the track record of this company and what kind of warranty do they offer on this?
I would have to look through the actual contract information. I don't have that, but I can get back to you on that.
Do they offer a warranty? I mean, is there work warranted or is there something we're going to have to pay for them to come down?
So the contract includes implementation, configuration, training, everything that we need over the course of the contract.
Over the five years?
Yep. At year five, then it would become an operational expense. We're looking to use our administrative reserves, which is part of what we've used for all of the other software upgrades to date. So at year five, we would need to be ready to absorb that into the budget at their annual maintenance cost, once it's basically built and custom-built for our fire department and put into place. Like I said, on the five-year mark, you'd see it in the operational budget.
How long has this company been in business?
I don't know that.
We can certainly get back to you in an email.
I have a question. On these fee schedules, the one-time fees and the eleven-month prorated subscription fee isn't included in this vote. Why is that? Is that something we're already paying for and it's not going to be in there five years? Because if you add all these up, it doesn't come to fifty thousand.
That's what we're currently paying right now for the existing software as a first number. The last five lines are total year one, two, three, four, five, will be the additional.
So we're already budgeting for the eighty-three-hundred?
Yes.
And the nine-hundred-dollar one-time fee?
Yep.
So that just gets added on to it. Okay, that's what I thought. Any other questions?
Two thousand sixteen, Bob.
So are we in consensus to move this to the future business meeting?
Yes.
If it gets moved. DBC Forest Management Grant?
Thank you, Council President. Council members, the city would like to apply for a grant of up to five hundred thousand dollars from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Urban Forestry Grant. As you are aware, we applied for a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from USDA, and we're not awarded it this year, so we're looking for a second opportunity when this grant came out. The other grant we have pending for trees is the Centennial Park Grant for Tree Replacement and Replanting. That is seventy-five thousand, and that's still, we haven't heard yet if we've been awarded that grant. So we'd like to apply for this grant and be able to address a number of different tree trimmings, removals, and replantings that we have throughout the city. And we have discussed at length the benefits of trees and the urban canopy and benefits to residents with more trees on our streets and in our neighborhoods. I was hoping it'd be moved to tonight's business meeting because the grant is due by the end of January.
Now, I see in here there's, we have a lot of trees that we have lost in the last several years and more to be lost if we're talking about the silver maple issue and the ashtray issue. So this would be a valuable resource if we were able to acquire this, for sure.
It's money that's desperately needed to address the ash and silver maple tree.
Correct. Which we have unfortunately a lot of.
A lot of, yeah.
And this study is over eight years old, so we also need to, this will be the last time we can use our tree management plan to apply for grants before we do an update the next tree management plan.
So does the E.C. Forest Management Grant will include costs for replacing that ashtray?
Yes.
That's our understanding of the grant, yes.
Catherine's Pond got a grant, pretty much the same thing. They came in and they, of course, in my mind, go through the city and say, okay, we'll put this species here, this species there, get a variety, but you've got to take into account the sidewalks, how fast the trees are going to come up and the amount of roots, heat and everything, including getting the pipes and the soil.
Yeah, I think a lot of the new tree plantings like to use a diverse species throughout the cities or communities that they plant in. And then root systems, we're looking for those ones that don't upheave the sidewalk, especially with all the new sidewalk we've done in the last three years.
And the cost of replacing sidewalks.
It's a good plan to me.
Yeah, I mean, definitely now that we know, back in the day, they thought silver maples were going to last a long time and didn't realize, apparently they would time out almost all at the same time.
Well, again, you look at the sidewalk project, if you've been in Nora's heart and fair mind, there's a lot of trees that appear to be healthy, but as soon as you cut them down, they're rotting from the inside out.
Right. That's, yeah, that's the unfortunate part of it. Silver maple issue right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this would be moved to tonight's business meeting so that we can act on this quickly. Bob?
How many trees do you forecast being able to purchase with this grant?
As far as removals?
No, Bob, purchasing replacement trees.
Replacement trees are usually pretty inexpensive. We could purchase a lot. The idea behind doing this would be to do it one-for-one. This particular grant would involve, I believe, tree removal, tree planting. It would count towards some equipment as well as sidewalk repairs, so we'd have to really take a look at how we wanted to kind of go about that. But...
Okay, one-for-one, that sounds reasonable.
That would be the idea, to do it that way.
Because right now, we've had trees removed and no replacements.
We try hard in every budget to budget enough replacements for removals.
I think sometimes the tree removal becomes overwhelming, where, God, all these trees, all of a sudden, I mean, it's vital because of the hazards involved, that's for sure.
And we have.
Yeah, in like that sidewalk project, we took down probably forty trees, we planted about thirty-five back, so we tried to get as close to a one-to-one match on that.
And we have had private business and individuals donate for trees, and we appreciate that. Anytime anyone does donate for specific areas, we make sure we are able to get those trees planted into the community. So it's, since we brought attention to the tree from the last few years, we've had a lot of people step up and fund tree plantings throughout the city.
I remember some, I remember Delonger at the time, was one of the streets when they did renovations, it devastated the street. It totally, pretty much took ninety percent of the trees off that street, and it just looked terrible. So, I mean, we definitely, the shade and all the benefits of the trees are important. So thank you for looking into this grant. So we're in consensus moving this to tonight's business then?
Yes.
Okay, good. Firefighter retirement, three to four E.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Firefighters who join the city of Batavia have been historically placed in what's called three eighty-four D State Retirement Benefit Plan, but have the option for the union's request to be placed in the three eighty-four E retirement plan through an agreement executed by former manager Matt Koppeler in two thousand and four. The union has requested that the one-year window be open to allow new firefighters who have been hired in the last three years to be placed in the three eighty-four E retirement. The cost of moving members to this three eighty-four E is thirty-three thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. The last time council did this was back in two thousand and sixteen, where members were moved to this benefit plan through retirement, and we're asking to use retirement reserves. I'd also like to point out that a new memorandum of agreement was executed between myself and IAFF that basically leaves the window open so that when members come in, they're automatically placed into this benefit plan, so we don't have to go back and calculate retroactively all of these, all of their time into retirement and the administrative work that takes, and then the one-time payment we get hit with when we do move them into this retirement plan. So this should be the last time that council sees a resolution of this nature, hopefully, into the future. So they're placed immediately into the appropriate benefit plan.
Any questions on that? That gets moved to tonight's business meeting? So we're all consensus to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Austin Park Grant?
Yes.
That's going to be, just to correct everything, that's not going to get moved to tonight's meeting, that'll get moved to a future business meeting via, show the city manager.
Sure. So just as background, and I'll pass it to Eric, who's done all the work on this grant project, we were awarded five hundred thousand from the New York State Office of Parks and Historic Preservation for new playground equipment at Austin Park.
So I did pass out before the meeting, and there are some here at the table for anybody who would like more, the actual master plan for Austin Park, which is quite extensive and includes replacing a picnic shelter, a band shell, pickleball courts, and some other things. But right now, what this grant is that we received is five hundred thousand dollars, and it's going to be used to help replace the existing playground, which is desperately in need of replacement. Along the way, we hope to make it a universally inclusive playground as we go forward. We are at the point right now where the playground that's there is not only falling apart, but our bureau maintenance staff cannot find replacement pieces or parts for it, so it's definitely something we need to do. And if we can also afford it and have any money left, there are some needed renovations And if we can also afford it and have any money left, there are some needed renovations to the splash pad, particularly with drainage and some things like that that will help that one better. So we're calling this phase one of the master plan, so as you look at this entire thing, this will be phase one with the hopes that we can secure additional grant money and other resources down the line. So it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant, there is a match required, so we're taking two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from DPW reserves to account for the match and any contingencies we have for the project. We do currently have nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars in those reserves, and if you recall, in the past couple times where we've had surplus money to put towards reserves, we've done it with the idea that we're hoping to get this grant and be able to cover that match. So we've been planning for it, and we're fortunate enough to, just before Christmas, get an early Christmas present from the state and realize that we have that plan.
So, explain to council why we're leaving it. It was supposed to be tonight, but I guess there is something I...
We have a meeting scheduled with New York State Parks and Recreation to understand the easement associated with Austin Park, the parking lot in the Brisbane, because currently they are situated as one parcel, so we want to make sure it doesn't hinder our ability to move divest of the Brisbane mansion in the future.
So it's gonna take some...
So we don't wanna move forward to business and have a full approval of the resolution till we have that conversation with the Parks Department.
Bob?
Yeah, if we sell the Brisbane mansion, what do we do for the parking?
Parking would still remain public parking.
One question I had, so twenty-five percent of five hundred thousand is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, but we're budgeting two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Do I really, is that just, we expect that kind of overwhelming, anything?
Contingencies as well as the actual budget for what we're hoping to do is...
So that money's not used, it just gets returned back to the reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
And to go back to the parking lot, so if the Brisbane does become a residential apartment building, there are overnight parking passes, which we'd love to create an overnight parking area in that vicinity for any of those residents, so they could park there, and they'd just get the city's overnight pass. But otherwise, we'd still want that parking for access in Austin Park and the post office and other municipal buildings in the area.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? So this will get moved to a future business meeting when final things get ironed out? Are we in consensus to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, that gets moved. Police surplus equipment required.
Thank you, Council President. In January of 2023, the City Council authorized the Batavia Police Department to purchase essential equipment, including department-issued firearms with BLT revenue. The department is prepared to dispose of the old firearms at this time and needs council's authorization through a surplus resolution to do so. Chief?
Yeah, so thank you, Council President. In September of 2023, we transitioned over officially all the officers to the nine-millimeter duty weapon, which with a red dot sight on that weapon. They went through two days of intensive training to make sure they're up to speed on the new, basically the new sighting system. The gun itself is very similar to the one that they had before, just a smaller caliber. We did, trainers did a fantastic job, and everybody passed the qualification. In fact, they saw an increase in marksmanship because of the system that we have in place now, so we did, we do need to surplus those weapons so we can get them back to the vendor as they were part of the training program.
Any questions?
What's the vendor allowing for these? What is there, thirty-five weapons?
The vendor is Amcharan, I believe it was, I think it was three hundred dollars a weapon, if I'm not mistaken, but I can give back to you the exact figures.
Actually, I wrote down three hundred, and then I said, well, maybe three fifty, so...
Yeah, I don't remember three hundred, three fifty, it was a good, it was a good amount for the amount of rounds that have gone through these weapons over the training period cycle that we had.
Yeah, it's probably close to half the cost of a new one, isn't it?
About a third.
Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move the police surplus to tonight's business?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. For your surplus equipment, engine twelve?
Thank you, Council President. The City of Batavia has been successful in procuring a new engine through a hundred thousand dollar USDA grant and financing. The old engine, number twelve, has been evaluated and determined by the chief to be surplus and must be declared so by council so it can be auctioned, and this is the disposal resolution coming forward tonight, hoping it can move to the business meeting so we can move forward with the disposal through auction of the fire truck.
Any questions or concerns on that? If you were there, I didn't see everybody, I was in and out quickly, but that pushing in ceremony was really fun, and everybody had a great time, and I think it's a neat tradition, and I'd like to see him continue that. Hopefully, we don't have to buy too many fire trucks for this to happen, but when we do on the rare occasion...
Every twenty years, we can have one.
Every forty years, if we can have a pushing in ceremony. It brought a lot of people down, and retired firemen were there, I saw a lot of people I haven't seen in years. It was a really good time, so if you ever have an opportunity to attend one of those, I strongly suggest you do, it was really fun to watch. So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? That gets moved. Stop DWI grant award?
Chief, I have your time here.
Thanks, Council President. So each year, as council's aware, we apply through Genesee County for detailed money to work special enforcement patrols or overtime duties for enforcing DWI laws across the city. We were awarded this year eight thousand four hundred dollars for the special enforcement patrols, along with eighteen hundred and eighty-four dollars towards equipment. So we do also pay for one wireless modem, which is our wireless connection back to the patrol car through Stop DWI, so we use a specific vehicle each time we do the patrol, that vehicle goes out, as well as telegraphing and repair of our repair units.
Any questions on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Open to adjourn, Mr. Veeley. Second to bat, Mr. Richmond. Call the roll please.
Councilmember Veeley?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
And I'll call to order the regular business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the November 2023 financials. Any questions or concerns on those? So are we in consensus to approve the November 2023 financials?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. You've also been given a copy of the December 2023 minutes. Any questions or concerns there? Any omissions or additions you'd like to make? Okay, so are we in consensus to approve the December 2023 minutes? Okay, so those are approved. We have a few agenda items. Number five has been canceled off, so we'll start with number three, resolution for the forest management grant application. Mr. Veeley? Number four, 2024, resolution for the 384E for the fire department, Mr. Veeley. And resolution six, 2024, surplus for the police department, Mr. Baykowski. And number seven, 2024, the fire department truck, Mr. Veeley. City attorneys report?
We're on number eight. I'm sorry.
I'm on, I'm on digital, so I'm sorry. I'm still trying to work through this, so forgive me. Number eight, 2024, the Stop DWI. Ms. Schmidt. Still trying to work through this task, so that's where we are. City attorneys report?
Yes, Council President, there's nothing specific to report on this time.
Any questions for the city? Okay, city managers report?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief this evening. We are waiting on four grants, an ice rink chiller grant that has not been announced yet, a water meter grant, a lead line grant, and the tree grant I mentioned earlier for Centennial Park. So those are our four outstanding grants, and then two new applications, the TAP grant for Swan Street improvements and sidewalk, and then tonight with your authorization, the tree grant. So just wanted to keep you up to date. Normally, the ice rink and the water meter grant would have been announced by around December seventeenth, but this year, the CFAs were not announced in one big package, they were piecemealed, so these are DEC grants we're waiting on.
Any questions for the city managers? Okay, resolution number three, 2024, Mr. Veeley?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit a 2023 New York State DC Community Forest Management Plan limitation in disadvantaged communities grant application.
Second to bat, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Councilmember Veeley?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution four, 2024, Mr. Veeley, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution providing section 384E to IA, uh, police covered by section 384D of the New York State Retirement and Social Security law and admitting the 2023, '24 budget to use in charter reserves.
Second to bat, Ms. Briggs? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Councilmember Veeley?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution six, 2024, Mr. Baykowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to declare police department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Second to bat, Mr. Twitchell? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Councilmember Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veeley?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution seven, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to declare fire department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Second to bat, Mr. Baykowski. Questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Councilperson McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veeley?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
And resolution eight, 2024, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 2023, 2024 police department budget to reflect the receipt of the Stop DWI grant and the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving while building impaired by drugs.
Second to bat, Mr. Veeley? Questions or concerns?
Chief, does this also include, is there money can be used to train people for driving while under the influence of drugs?
To train the officers?
Yes.
We did not include any training dollars in this grant, simply because we don't have officers at this point in time that are interested in becoming a DRE, which would be the next step up. You get basic training during your basic school to recognize and parent driver.
I was reading an article the other day about one of our neighboring communities, and there was a fatal accident involved and everything, but there was no blood test on them because the state has established no levels for TCPs in the blood, so they said it would be just a waste of time anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that is correct. There is no established level of THC in the bloodstream at this point in time, that's something that has, the state has to figure out, but you can still be arrested for driving under the influence of marijuana even without a level, so you just have to demonstrate impairment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veeley?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Draft, or, excuse me, the revenue workforce, you have to order finding?
Yes. At this point, I'd like to invite Rayanne and Matt Gray. I got you guys seats right here in our group up here, so you can sit right up front. And Derek Guy was the other citizen member of the group who is now on council, so he can stay in his seat. Just wanna thank you guys very much for coming to our meetings and all of your inputs, so we wanted to really discuss this, not in a presentation way, but in a discussion way with council tonight. I'll give an introduction, we'll talk through some of the strategies, and just know this is a draft document, so we still have some changes we're going to be making to it before it's final, and it's supposed to be a working document in which we can continue to add to this in the future, share with other communities. Eric and I get to go to a group called NICEMA, which is the New York State City and County Managers Association, so we'll be sharing it with those managers, hearing about their revenue ideas, but everyone's very interested to see what this document looks like and what ideas we've come up with so far. So with that, I just have a short introduction about the group. It met several times with the goal of understanding the current sources of city revenue, the trends of those sources of revenue, and to brainstorm new revenue ideas. Of note, the property tax levied in the city has grown slowly over time, as has sales tax. Revenue that has remained flat in the city includes our cable franchise fees, utilities, and state aid. Fines and forfeited revenue has decreased significantly as related to policies in Albany related to available offenses. And at the back of your packet, you don't need to run to it now, there's charts and graphs about these different revenue sources, so you can see their trends over time. Mortgage tax revenue remains somewhat steady over time, but swings both up and down from our budgeted amounts depending on the housing market that year. So the work group wanted to find new revenue sources to continue to assist the city in keeping a low tax rate while providing critical services to the residents, as current major revenue sources are limited and rely heavily on property and sales tax. And just to note, the AIM aid from the state has not increased nor decreased in the last fifteen plus years. So that is something we're always advocating with NICOM on state aid increases to municipalities, especially to cities. So we have group members and staff members here to talk about each of the strategies that we analyzed, but I wanna point out that our group didn't find a single silver bullet. There's no one answer to give us the sustainable revenue source that's gonna allow us to pay our employees the wages they deserve to do the work that our residents require. So it's going to be a amalgamation of many different strategies, some that are one-time revenue sources, some that we might be able to count on ongoing, like the cannabis tax. Some of the one-time revenue sources, I'll just, you know, as a reminder, like to point out what is a revenue we can count on operationally for years to come, and ones that are just one-time sources. We explored the voluntary payments for public service, sale of city property. One that has just come to our attention is the climate smart communities funding. This year, if you garner enough points, they are giving communities ten thousand dollars. So we need to look into that and see if we'll qualify and what activities council might need to take if we need to become a climate smart community. We also looked at public safety payments from corporations when they enter into pilot agreements as an option, but again, these are one-time revenue payments, not something that would be operationally sustainable in the long run, like your sales tax or your levy. So I reminded you, the document is still under review. The first strategy explored is continuing to grow the city's tax base through new investment and the continuation of market rate assessed values. Additional revenue is only created when the tax levy increases, not when assessment increases. However, additional growth is created when the overall assessment of commercial and residential property increases. We wanted to talk a bit about the levy and the assessment calculation and how they set the rate. So I will stop there and open it up to group members and staff members. I had Lisa and Rhonda to help me with this topic, if you guys have anything to add, and I want this to be an open discussion with questions and answers between council and members of the group.
So Rhonda, if you don't mind, just one thing I wanted to add to what Rachel was talking about. When we have growth in both commercial and residential assessed values, that reflects well on the city's credit rating. It tells the credit rating agencies how well we're doing, how well we're progressing and evolving and developing, and it's most important now than it ever has been, since we are going to be bonding the largest bond that I've had in the fifteen years I've been here on the city police station in the future. So that just tries, I'm trying to show you guys the importance of the growth in commercial and residential values and how credit agencies look at that.
Very good point. From my standpoint as assessor, the growth in our assessed value is extremely important because it gives us an avenue to make our assessment more equitable by reviewing, doing parcel review, field review, and actually analyzing all of these sales. Even when the market's not as it is now, it's still very important constantly reviewing, and if we don't do assessment updates, our data kinda goes by the wayside. So I, my job, my staff's job, is to take in documentation received, given to us by COZONE, and also through the process of the sale. Making work is generally, we send out information to the property owner, we send them our sales verification forms, and when you have hundreds of sales a year, and they do, most parties do take the time to fill that out and send it back to my office so that we have another avenue, that we're constantly reviewing our data, making sure it's up to date. In the eyes of the state community that adheres to an assessment contract such as we have always had, they see the fact that we're putting in an effort to make sure it's equitable, to make sure it's fair. Property owners grudgingly will admit when they leave my office that they understand the process is fair, they don't like it, but it's fair because we are reviewing, and we're not just reviewing one neighborhood, we're reviewing all neighborhoods. So it's very important on all levels to make sure that data gets updated constantly.
Now, how are we gonna do in the future? Aren't we doing like a portion of the city every year, and then every so many years it would be complete? Or, because the last couple of years, we were doing the whole city, and I think that's what kinda overwhelmed. I know what overwhelmed me, trying to answer the questions, and people complaining and upset they didn't understand, so how can we do better with that part of it?
Well, we actually are reviewing and doing the whole city every time we do assessment updates. It just doesn't appear that it's the whole city, because we have enough properties and enough boat neighborhoods, that not all neighborhoods have growth in the sale market. You could have, maybe the south side was pretty stagnant for years, and now all of a sudden, that's jumped up. They have what we consider the higher-end valued neighborhoods, such as Narrowland and Garden, that, you know, although they have substantial growth, the biggest growth is in neighborhoods two hundred and three hundred, where the average sale price is a hundred and twenty thousand. So it's constantly flowing and changing. We review every single neighborhood, but we're only changing where we need to change. So it appears that we're doing these by these, but we're not.
Thank you.
So, and just to close out this topic, unless there's any other additions, we want to continue to work through the plans put in place by council many years ago, including the DRI, the BOA, and attract those types of developments, market rate housing and commercial development as well. Our highest assessed values are... Our highest assessed values are in our downtown core. And again, in the budget book, you will see, I think it's page eight or nine, there's a graph that shows the highest assessed values are always in the center of your city. And as it moves out, you move down to lower and lower assessed values into the residential areas. So if we're going to continue to have, see values that are equitable and fair for everyone, the best way to do that is to attract new development into parcels of land that are developable to do that in commercial areas. So the next item was the pilot payments and the tax cap. Unfortunately, and George, I don't know if you heard, there was a bill in front of the governor. I don't think she signed it, but it would have excluded the formula they use now, because right now, and Rhonda, catch me if I'm wrong, you cannot, you cannot take the value of a building that's been on a pilot and add it into your growth factor, which then that affects your tax cap. Is that correct, how I said it? So right now, it's at a disadvantage. It's how the law was written 12 years ago when they did it. So when we have a corporation that does receive a pilot, that growth of $12 million is never actually put into our formula, and we never see that growth happening when pilots are put on, when the property goes on to full value after the pilot is completed. So there has been multiple rounds of legislation through the state legislature, but nothing has been signed by the governor's office. So we'd definitely like to see that occur. With that, we've had some conversations about asking corporations who are under pilots to contribute voluntary to police and fire services. So that part isn't in the report, that'll probably be an addition, but we'd like to see if that's something we can pursue in the future.
Any questions on that? Everyone on the stand?
Eric, I think you had cannabis tax.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the other strategies we looked at, and we've actually, you will see as we get into the budget in the next couple of months, that we've actually budgeted a small amount of revenue from this going into '24, '25 is the cannabis tax. So the city, a couple of years ago now, opted in as a city for cannabis sales. We currently had one retail shop that was able to utilize
Pop-up market?
A special pop-up market that the state allowed over at Empire Hemp up until just about Christmas time to sell. And we've had two dispensaries filled out documentations with the clerk with their intent to open an adult-use cannabis retail location in the city, once the state comes around and the state cannabis committee comes around and awards those. So we are looking at, when we projected for next year, about $750,000 in sales at those two locations, which will result in about $33,000 in cannabis tax revenue as we go forward. So that is a little spot that we're hoping to see some help in the current year and years going forward. So kudos to council for opting, opting in on that as an opportunity to grow some revenue.
And it's not a one-time. This would be an ongoing, similar to your sales tax revenue. So that is one that may grow in the future, but it's so new and emerging where we don't know.
Do they, are they now stopped selling since the end of the year?
Yes. The locations are no longer authorized. There was a slew of new announcements just yesterday, Friday, I believe. I did not see any Batavia, the Batavia locations announced in those licensures, so I'm not sure when the next round will be announced, but I'm, I'm assuming that one is a woman-owned business, the other, I don't know the owners, but that they will be approved in, in a, in a round very soon through the Office of Cannabis Management. So the third strategy we looked at was voluntary contributions from nonprofits. I believe Heidi talked to, has been attending NICOM conferences for a very long time, and she had heard from Barbara Van Appes, who's now the president of NICOM, discussing different revenue sources, and one was contributions for nonprofits that Ithaca had undertaken. Is that correct, Heidi?
Yes. NICOM actually did a whole presentation on other revenue sources, and this one is just one that was kind of interesting, that other municipalities were receiving voluntary payments from their not-for-profits, usually their large one, Ithaca, for example, just because of having that university right there, was a huge part of their municipality, who was using, you know, police, fire, public work services, but being a university, were not having to pay any taxes for that. So they basically just asked, the city just asked the university, would you be willing to pay us, you know, to help cover some of this stuff, because you're draining a lot of these resources, but not having to pay for any of it, you know, obviously by the nature of them being tax exempt. So they've worked out quite a, at the time at least, quite a lucrative agreement with the college, just by simply asking, would you be willing to help out your municipality because of the services that you utilize and you don't have to pay for?
Did they use a formula, or was it a voluntary thing, or did they say, this is about the taxes you would be paying, how about?
She didn't really say the details, because they also explained that there were some significantly smaller tax-exempt properties that they just said, she was, it was, you know, someone would be like, well, I'll give you $500, and they said it wasn't a lot of money, but getting it from, you know, handful of people or organizations really helped. So I don't know that it was a formula-based or anything like that. Maybe with the university it might have been, but with the smaller not-for-profits, it was just an ask. What could, you know, would you be able to help us out?
So with that, we did find out that Batavia ranks 49th out of 62 cities with the percent of value exempt. Salamanca, Rensselaer, Albany, and Ithaca topped the list with approximately 60% of their property being tax-exempt in those cities. Batavia has 32% of our property that's non-taxable.
Well, as I remember, that was lower on the list, like out of?
Correct. We, other cities have more non-taxable property than we do. So being, it's like a golf score, you want to be the 62nd. So we're doing okay. But certainly, all cities have nonprofit and non-taxable parcels inside their city boundaries.
I mean, if you look at the examples Rachel used, Salamanca, Rensselaer, Albany, Ithaca, Rensselaer, Ithaca, or Rensselaer, Ithaca, large college populations right near downtown. Albany obviously has government. And Salamanca, I would imagine, has something to do with the rez being a large part of there. So you can probably look at every city and pick something, right, that they have that lead to their numbers.
I think it's important that you put that stat in there, because it seems like we have a lot more. You know what I mean? I mean, compared to the feedback I received from the public, it seems like that we're being overrun with nonprofits. I kind of thought the same thing. The perception was off from the reality of the statistic, because when you look at the statistic, we're, we're not doing too bad, so maybe we should be, being aware of it early is a good thing, so that we can keep an eye on it, so we don't get overwhelmed. Like 60% is, that's a lot.
Right.
That's a lot. So I can't even imagine that.
Right. And that, that puts the burden on all the residential and commercial properties as your taxpayers.
Right.
So we're not in, we're definitely not in the same place as other cities are, and don't have that very, very large nonprofit base or non-taxable base in our city. The fourth strategy was negotiating payments from the community, payments for community benefit from the largest nonprofits. So we just took a look at what our largest nonprofits were and listed them out with some property values for the council members to see.
Reuben, do you have a time to look at that one?
The fifth strategy is sale of city property no longer deemed in public use. Since myself and Eric have been here, we've continually reviewed properties that the city has, like tonight with the foreclosure auction. Since 2020, we were able to finally move some properties that were foreclosed on through tax foreclosure into that auction, and looking at different ways to evaluate the portfolio of properties the city does have, which ones can go to auction, which ones are better served through an economic development RFP. So that is an ongoing process. But there is, the federal government, you can see the amount of value of the properties the federal government, state government, city Batavia, school district, and Genesee County, and town of Batavia own in the city of Batavia.
So then, I've assumed that includes the VA hospital?
That would be federal.
School for the state.
Yep.
Well, those are big properties that affect us.
Right. And this is inclusive of the 32% we discussed. So when you take the 32% of non-taxable parcels, it includes the nonprofits listed here, it includes your religious nonprofits, and then it also includes these government properties as well into that calculation. So again, one-time revenue sale, but something we want to continue to look for opportunities for sale of property. The next item was a stormwater user fee, and I know councilmember McGinnis brought this up at our budget meetings last year. Since then, we have a proposal from our engineers to look at what the city could do to create a stormwater user fee, and in essence, its own utility fund. The stormwater user fee would be applied to all property owners, because it would be a utility, similar to sewer and water. So any building or parcel that is a sewer or water user today pays sewer and water fees to the utility. While they may not pay property taxes, they still have to make those utility payments. If we were to continue to explore sectioning out stormwater as a utility, which I do feel is a very good idea, because we have multiple different unique characteristics of stormwater in our city, including the Big Ditch and the Grand Canal, that we certainly could formulate capital plans for, we would be able to spread that user fee across anyone who has impervious surface area, and we might be able to reduce that fee now. It would not be part of the general levy. For our property owners, it would be a utility user fee. So the more square feet or surface area you have, the more you would pay in a runoff stormwater type fee.
So it couldn't apply to individual homeowners?
It would, but the model we're looking at, there are ways to reduce it for homeowners. So if they have plantings and they only have their driveway, it would be a very small to no fee. So we need to come up with a structure for that and see how it works. But if we did move it to its own fund and made it a utility, it would no longer be in the general fund budget.
Yeah, I'd definitely be against it, individual homeowners, just, you know, after the recent assessments, tax increases, and now we're going through a period of inflation. I mean, people have just tapped out.
Didn't we calculate, or we were kind of rough-guessimating, that it would balance out from the fees that they're paying now, some of that would come off of that?
We would have to get into the study of it. So this was a way to have all properties in the city contribute to stormwater management. Currently, only taxable properties contribute to stormwater management.
Right, paying taxes.
Correct, to the general fund.
I agree with Bob's, and I don't like that. Cal?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Yes. Over the course of time, I've looked at how, how can we get revenue from nonprofits or tax exempts? They, they, they take city services, and they don't pay for them. That basically has stepped the surface. A stormwater assessment fee is assessed with everyone, including all nonprofits, as we stated before, on their square footage. This, this is, this is, this is not something where, it's being done at other places. This is a revenue enhancement that overall will help us lower taxes to the homeowner, Bob, because we don't, we won't need as much. We have, we've got 30% of the city that doesn't pay taxes. They don't, they don't pay for fire, they don't pay for DPW, they don't pay for police. This is a way of leveling, leveling the playing field and putting, having, skin in the game. There is nothing wrong with having tax exempts pay their fair share, and this is part of that. It is morally wrong to have them get services and not pay for it.
Well, I, I just know that the people heard it all about when we got out of the trash business, and don't worry, it'll show up on your property taxes, and you're going to get lower taxes and all that. No, no, we, nobody got lower taxes. It just became another source of revenue. And I'm sorry, I know what you're trying to do, I agree with you, but there might, maybe we need to look at other ways, other methods, because, you know, if you say that a homeowner, well, it's only another $50 a year, don't worry about it. Homeowners, up to you. Every week, I get calls from people I know that say, hey, Bob, just so you know, next year, we're probably going to be leaving the state, so, you know, we've had it, we've just had it. And New York just keeps piling on the services that are free and the taxes, so.
And we, we've had an ongoing study, let's the study go through. Every year, we face a diminished call from Albany for reduced, reduced fees and more mandates. This is a way for us to raise some money, and I still think that we will help the taxpayer in the long run, not the nonprofits, I don't care about them. The average taxpayer, people like me retired, I think this is a good benefit. If, if we do this with a good study, lay it out and explain it cold to everyone, I think that this will be a winner for the city.
Let the study go forward.
And again, this is a draft, it's still a living document. And again, I, it's too early to tell, but I, I agree, I'd like to see the facts and figures before we commit to anything, but at this point, there's a big draft on this, so we're just talking about it, we're just feeling it out. But at some point, that same inflation is hitting the city. That same inflation is, our wages are going up because we try to retain people, because you lose somebody, and then it takes a year or two before, in the police department, it's, what's the academy now?
Academy, five months.
It's five months, plus on-the-job training. You're talking a year from start to finish before you find somebody, do a background on somebody. All those resources cost time and money every time we lose somebody. A requirement's one thing, but we have, we have the same inflationary problems as a homeowner does, only on a larger scale. So we are looking for different revenues. This is just an option that came up. And again, I, I agree with you, we need to look at the facts and figures and see how this turns out. But it's just one more of several items that we can talk about.
Yeah, and if it's not this, it will be the tax levy, absolutely, because like council president said, we have good people here we want to retain. We have, we continue to rob Peter to pay Paul in every single budget. We are not investing enough in our employees. We have union contracts, we have settlements that we have to adhere to, and we want more public safety, and we want better infrastructure. So we've been mandated as your employees to give you public safety and infrastructure. And we're going to either have to do that with creative programs like this, or on the backs of the tax rate and the tax levy. There, there's no, I mean, we're either in growth mode, or we're declining. And I guess we need to really determine what we want to do here as a city. Do we want to increase public safety with net officers out in our communities and ensure that we have the right number of personnel on the streets to keep us safe? You call our police, they're there in four minutes or less. There is no city in the country that has a response time like that. And when we have any type of gun activity or gun violence, we take it very seriously. That's not okay here. And if we're going to continue to take that seriously, we're going to have to find we're going to have to find ways to pay people and to support the infrastructure we have here.
And you mentioned government mandates. The raised age has put burdens on the police department and the investigative staff there. The evidentiary thing, the bail reform, same person gets released, goes back out because commits another crime, another four hours of paperwork trying to solve that crime. And they just keep adding up. So the state's not helping us with this either. Because these are expenses that keep adding up on our end and we have to find a way to keep that public safety level high and what people expect. The firemen respond quickly to a house fire, we're all close together. If the house next to me is on fire, it's important to get there quickly so I don't lose my house. I'm only a driveway away. It's happened and I, and I survived it because they were there quickly and they were in my driveway cutting holes and roasting, putting out fires quickly. Saved my neighbor's house and they saved my house in a sense, too. So if you've gone through that, or you need the police, or you need the fire department, you're really glad they're there, you're really glad their staff's well when they arrive. And it comes down to plot as well. You know, we want, you have a snow emergency. Last year, we had all hands on deck and we were able to weather it, provide food to people, assist other municipalities with our staff. So it's good to have that when we need it. And if we keep cutting staff and you need to need them, you can only call overtime so much when everybody's there. There's nobody left to call in. So I, I get what we're all saying here, but we're going to have some tough decisions to make on this budget.
I don't see a downside to this. What argument could a nonprofit say, well, I don't want to pay my fair share, but I want all the services? And when you, if you're going to put it strictly on the backs of the homeowner, that's not fair.
No. But again, I think it's too early, we have to see the facts and figures on how much, would we, would the fee be and what would it be on the taxpayer versus on the nonprofit? We have to figure that out. But it's just something to think about because we have some tough decisions in the future going forward with other budgets, so.
I think to Ray's point, we have to decide what we want to do as a city. Are we going to grow? Because in my experience, sitting through now three contract negotiations, we're talking contracts that are basically cost of living adjustments is really what they are. You know, two and a half, three percent, something like that, that's a cost of living adjustment. That's not a raise, that's not a, you know, a substantial amount of money for anybody. So to your point about keeping up with inflation and that inflation was 8% last year, I don't, you know, eight, nine, 10% over since COVID the past two or three years. We're not keeping up with that. So we are seeing those expenses everywhere. You know, two days ago, Saturday night, we got, we had a snowstorm. By eight o'clock at night, I got Brett texting me on the phone saying, hey, our guys are out. We've already got, we've already been through lunch, we're going out a second time. You know, not everybody needs fire and police all the time, but everybody needs the problem. Everybody needs that kind of stuff. And we're trying to do it and we're trying to do it with, you know, bare bones. So I think as council and as staff, we've got to look at where, what do we want to be? Do we want to be thriving, do we want to be vibrant? Do we want to be all these things that we say we want to be? Because it's going to come down to making difficult decisions coming forward.
If I could just piggyback on that, we are up against a market right now where a police officer could go, make $120,000 serving another community. They can't make that here. We can make it in communities that are not that far down the road. I'm not saying we pay him $120,000, but I'm saying that's the reality of what we're up against right now. That's what the going rate is for people in public safety. We, you know, we have to figure out a way to, to save the rest of these guys' future.
And off of that, we've already lost multiple employees in DPW for the same thing. Not even just leaving to go to the rag detector, they're going to different municipalities for way more money. You know, and not only are we with the cost of living adjustments, not keeping up with wages, but we're also, we're not overstaffed either. We're already at bare bones level of employees. You start talking about losing employees on top of that.
I mean, we had attrition going on for many years.
Yeah, the city had to dig out of a negative fund balance position. And they did so, and they did so really well. And as they did that, all these things came to light where we caught corners on services, so to speak, where we weren't as aggressive in code enforcement because we didn't have the staff. Or we just couldn't get to this because we didn't have the staff. So we've started in the last few years what I thought was right sizing the ship. But we can't do that without extra funds and extra revenue. So I know we probably need to move on, but I guess the thought is, at some point, council will need to give myself and management direction if we pursue the stormwater fee to give you a full-blown report on it and how it might look, how it might work, and what the average resident would see with stormwater. So.
And we can, listen, you need an opinion on that.
I don't need an opinion now.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to see more of this talk. I think, I definitely think we should.
This is all discussion tonight. This is all.
We should go move forward on it. But I mean, and again, I should come back to council at a later time with a little more information maybe. And we should, eventually we're going to have to make a decision.
So the last strategy, so that was a very healthy discussion. And I thank everyone for their time and their opinions is.
Certainly we can figure out what the average income for people in this community is because the cost of living is hurting everybody.
Yeah. We have the medium income and when we do the budget presentation, so we'll move into the revenue presentation at the next meeting. Again, I'm not going to do a presentation, I'd like to do another roundtable discussion. I, I don't want you guys just to hear me talk, I like to hear the feedback and understand where we're going. We have those stats and statistics in the, in the book. So we did talk about other revenue sources. We have an old-school parket, parking ticket system?
You'd say old-school, that's the way to say it. People write them and they go to.
Old-school.
Very old-school. And we really have no way to collect outstanding parket, parking tickets. So if you issued a parking ticket today and you don't pay it within 10 days, you know, I know I'm saying this with immediate present, but there really isn't a way for us to effectively collect on that. We do send out letters, but you know, it's not, it's not really effective. So this year, we were able to partner with T2 Systems and we are, we're implementing a new parking ticket software, which will allow for a streamlined process, people can pay online. So we're going to get into the 20th century, people can actually just pull up an app on their phone and pay their parking ticket without giving it another thought. They can also dispute those tickets online. Any disputes would be, go through a process to be vetted and then, you know, they would receive a decision on that. The other thing, the other big part of this is if it goes unpaid, it will go into a collection system. And this, this company will collect on those outstanding debts and make the city whole. So you will be adding fees on top of what is already outstanding, passing that on to the, the person that didn't pay for their parking ticket. And then the city will receive what they're supposed to receive initially. At no cost to us, other than the initial outfitting of, of the software system itself, but the collection piece of that is part of that system. So it's very.
So how do they make their, why do they do this if it doesn't cost us anything? They get it on the.
No, I'm sorry. I guess what I meant is the, the, it's no additional cost. So they, they add fees to the collection, to the parking ticket.
So that pays for the collection part?
That pays for the collection piece, right, correct, so.
So will this balance out? Will this balance out and actually at least be solvent? In other words, the amount of money we're paying for the software and the equipment and all that, will that at least balance out the amount of fees that we collect? Or are they going to raise the parking fee now, too?
We're not going to raise the parking fee. The software itself, I can't really, that dollar on to you. Yeah, it was a three-year contract and I think it was like $9,000 upfront. And then like four and five, but we can get to that number for sure. So it will definitely be paid for through the collection.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if we're doing all this work, it's at least paying for itself. You know, because the, the whole purpose is the enforcement end of it, not to make a profit, but to, to keep people's behavior so they're not parking in unprofitable places. So that there's a penalty for that, so they learn. And then, you know, we're not trying to make a profit off people's illegal parking, we just want to make it pay for itself, so to speak.
So they also agreed to take on the old unpaid parking tickets, which we have a spreadsheet that goes back to 2009, I believe. Obviously, some of that older stuff is going to be a lot, you know, difficult to collect on, but they will make efforts at doing that.
So please come pay your parking tickets.
Yes. Come see how you. Fifteen years ago.
We really appreciate it. We looked at nuisance alarm fees and I know everyone's getting weary, but we're almost done. The City of Corning charges building owners for accessible avoidable alarms. We had Captain Herberger come in to talk to us about that. We decided that wasn't an avenue we'd like to pursue. Certainly more about education of getting your alarm serviced is where the fire department would like to take that program. And just a few other things that through passing conversations, there's the opportunity for naming rights at Dwyer Stadium that could bring in some revenue. There's a conversation that could be had with the Genesee County about bed tax funds as another tax revenue that we don't see benefit from. I believe they're used through the county with the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Board and other things. So it's a conversation we could have. And then I mentioned the public safety payments from corporations receiving pilots and climate smart communities and funds associated with that. So, Rayanne, Matt, I, we've talked a lot and I'd love to hear from you guys because you're very active in our discussions and we, we really appreciate, and Derek as well, the conversations we had.
Well, you know, we thank you for including us in the conversation, bringing us into a, you know, a city, from the city perspective. It was great on our end to be a participant and give a different point of view. I think the, you know, the work on this was very collaborative and, and thank you for, for listening to it. I don't think I can really add too much more into what was already covered and in the packet. Rayanne, did you?
I agree wholeheartedly. It was, it was wonderful to be included in the group and as much as I do know about government process, to be involved with it in your own hometown and really get into the minutia of it is very interesting. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you both for serving and Derek as well as half citizen, half councilman.
So we're still, the group could still be, it's still active, right?
The group's still active.
So this is still working, maybe not as metal meetings, but we're definitely going to meet again and we'll, we'll talk these things through.
Yeah. I think we'll schedule a time for council to maybe respond to some of these items and set some strategic direction on them for pursuit by management, what they'd like to see.
I mean, and there may be, I mean, there may be nothing we can do. I mean, as far as the stormwater goes, we, we couldn't eliminate some property owners from others. It either has to be everyone or no one. You can't just single out like, oh, only commercial properties will get it or whatever. We couldn't do that. So that's why that came about that way.
And I looked up Ithaca's just for a reference point, and these won't be our numbers, but just so, in Ithaca, residential fees are 475 a lot, but then there's credits you can receive. And I think some of the credits take it down to a dollar or less.
Is that a quarter, Rachel, per quarter?
That was per month, I believe. But there's a stormwater user fee, you can look, Google it for Ithaca and kind of look at their example of the local law.
Orchard Park as well, too.
Okay, yep, Orchard Park, there's, might be a district. So we'd, we'd need, how we're set up as a city, it'd be different. But the stormwater user fee for residential can receive credits. And I think what that does is essentially significantly reduce what, if you think about a residential property, they have very little impervious surface. You have your roof and you have your driveway. When you think about larger buildings with parking lots, they have very large impervious surfaces. So they would, you know, based on the examples we have, would be paying much more for stormwater management. So that was just what we've been looking at and we really appreciate your time and listening. The members of council that were in the group were Councilmember Jankowski, Councilmember Briggs, and Councilmember McGinnis, who brought a lot of discussion to the group as well. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Can we move on? Okay, we have to make a motion to adjourn the session.
Deputy Vice President, whereas Article 7, Section 1051E of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to the Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the City Council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second, Bob. Bob, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Richman?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.